Then we'll just jump to the current reality with Alex and myself.
Okay, we'll just add ten minutes on.
Yeah.
Time the whole thing from start to finish.
I have a question though. Are you supposed to let anyone know to change the law?
I've got this.
But how would we let you know that we're ready for you to do that? Or are you just gonna kind of...
I'm gonna try to follow along, but if you want to signal me.
Like?
Yeah.
I'm gonna kinda do a finger thing, I guess.
Okay.
You can give it a little shock, but...
We will have...
No comments from the peanut gallery.
There will be a mic on each end of the table that works. However, if they work down the table for the next person. So there will be two mics.
Two on each side.
Two on each side, so we should have plenty of mics.
What we'd like to do tonight is, as Dr. Eaton said, go through the presentation, try and get a time frame. And after we finish, we'll discuss what changes or what time tuning we want to do. We've got our theater critics in the audience here to help us out.
See some neighbors.
See school neighbors sometimes.
I don't know how he makes yours, just a general question. Is Sally gonna talk about the timeline and the history of how this came out?
Yeah.
Okay, so, great.
Another quick question. As I understand it, most everybody, all school districts, are ready for this, right? Elements of... Certainly we are, but aren't most districts?
I don't know anybody that's not. I only know of one school district in the state of Missouri that's not.
Okay, yeah, so that's the set.
But it can decide who they all are.
I'm not aware of anybody who's not.
Okay, we're ready. I'd like to welcome everybody this afternoon to a presentation on the Kansas College and Career Readiness Standards, formerly known, or formerly known as the Common Core. We are the Board of Education from USD 457 in Garden City, Kansas. And I'd like to introduce those of us up front. I'm Tom Blackburn, board member. With us is Sally Koppel from Board of Education. Dr. Gloria Hopkins. Jean Clifford. Laura Boers. And Alex Wallace, board members. Rick Atha. Our superintendent. Darren Dennis, Assistant Superintendent. And Leanne Roderick, Director of Elementary Education. Brief outline of the topics we're gonna cover. And we hope this will answer some of the questions that you've been getting from your constituents in your public. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sally Koppel to talk about how the Common Core came about. We'll move into what the current reality is. And my question for you is, have you been told how poor today's schools are? And the point we want to make is, schools have not failed. Okay?
Hit the presentation button.
As you can see, the statewide assessments have achieved a 20% growth in almost ten years. So we are educating our kids at a better rate. But teaching to a test is not enough because today's student must be able to problem solve. Professional demands are growing faster than our current improvement with kids. The technology changes almost daily. And we compete in a worldwide market. So our kids need to be prepared to compete not only against other Kansas kids, but other kids across the U.A., even other kids across the world. Sorry, I jumped on your spot.
That's all right. The new reality is, is that society is demanding a higher skill set than education does. As an employee in the electrical industry, I had to demand a higher level thinking and certain skills from future employees to be successful. The Electrical Apprenticeship that I'm affiliated with out of Wichita, Kansas, has had to change its core curriculum a couple of years ago to meet the newer standards and the high society demands as far as a more electrical changes. Education has to evolve to meet society needs. Why is it so important? Students have to graduate, or can graduate with a higher electrical skill set, educational skill set, can go on to earn a bachelor's degree, earn up to 75% more. A associate's degree can earn up to 30% more than high school graduates. In my electrical trade, we can earn up to between 60 and 65% more than a high school graduate.
Contrary to what my mother thinks, this is not my average high school test score. This is information provided by Tom Alisa Rice, presented at the Model Schools Conference, that 70% of today's high school students are ineligible for military service. If you do not have a diploma, you cannot qualify. G D no longer qualifies, and they must pass the basic literary test. But even beyond that, this number is increasing at 1% a year. And if they are not employable, they are not contributing to economic growth, which in light of our current direction of some of our policies, economic growth is the key, and education is a key component of that.
College freshmen, well are very well prepared. High school teachers are saying that 89% of students are ready for college. College instructors are saying 26% of those same students were ready when they received them. We are seeing students that are taking more remedial classes their freshman year. In the electrical apprenticeship trade, we have seen a significant drop in reading comprehension scores for the applicants qualifying tests to get into the electrical apprenticeship. And math was an average score. We need our educational system to evolve. Yesterday's ceiling will become the floor. We must change how we teach students to think.
Today's schools have to be different than the past to keep up with the demands from the professional and post-secondary educational world. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Jean Clifford to talk about some common misconceptions.
Thank you. We believe that we do need to make some changes in how we educate students so that they will meet the challenges of tomorrow. College and career-ready standards are designed to create those changes and to ensure that our students are ready. There are some concerns and misconceptions about the standards, and we will address some of them now. Some have said that adopting common standards would bring all states down to the lowest common denominator. This means that states with high standards, such as Kansas, would lower their standards and in fact, take a step backwards on standards. In fact, however, there's an agreement that states won't lower their standards and that even high-performing states like Kansas will be challenged to move even higher. We need to keep challenging students from all states because, as we have seen, even in high-performing states, there are too many students who still have to take remedial classes in their post-secondary school, even though they pass all the tests and graduate from high school. The standards incorporate the best thinking in our nation, the highest of international standards, and evidence and expertise about educational outcomes in preparing our students for success in college and careers. Our students need to be ready for college and careers and not have to spend their precious time and their parents' money just to get to the starting point for college and career training. Another misconception that we've heard is that the standards focus on skills and don't reflect the importance of content knowledge. Actually, the standards ensure that most skills and content are addressed, and they recognize that each are important in educating our students. The standards are quite rigorous and ensure that students expand their understanding and increase their skills so that they have a greater depth of knowledge in both. For example, in English Language Arts, the standards require some content for all students, such as American literature, founding documents, and Shakespeare. An additional content is determined at state and local levels. The standards also require students to become knowledgeable in literature and other areas through reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And in mathematics, the standards set forth a solid foundation in basic math concepts such as whole numbers, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, fractions, and decimals, which are necessary to support students' ability to understand more demanding math concepts. Middle school and high school standards require students to apply mathematical thinking to real-world issues and challenges, and prepare students to think and reason mathematically as college students and employees do every single day. Another misconception is that the standards have important topics and concepts, such as those in math, that are missing or addressed at a different grade level than we currently encounter them. In fact, however, the standards are designed to have mathematical progressions that have been shown to be coherent, evidence-based, and which allows students to develop their mathematical skills and knowledge in a very consistent and reasoned fashion. The math standards are designed to provide our students with math knowledge base that is second to none and internationally competitive. Each state, including Kansas, may experience some minor adjustments in the timing and grade level at which specific math topics are presented to students. But these adjustments are minor, and the benefit of having aligned standards in math will allow for much greater benefits to students who transfer schools and move to higher levels. Some have also mentioned that they disagree with the college and career-ready standards because teachers weren't involved in writing them. This is incorrect. Teachers and education experts and professionals from many states work to create the standards, and the process of drafting the standards was not just intensive but transparent. It included the participation and contributions from many state educational specialists and authorities. A frequent objection to the implementation of the standards is the belief that the standards are associated with No Child Left Behind legislation and are therefore a product of the federal government. In fact, the standards are state-led and state-driven. They are not derived from or part of No Child Left Behind. And they aren't mandatory. Adoption is voluntary, and individual states are free to adopt them or not. This is a state-led initiative and began even before the Elementary and Secondary Education Act guidance was provided. The states have continued their work through the National Governors Association Center and the Council for Chief State School Officers, who are developing a state policymaker guide for implementation. This is a state-created guide to support state implementation and collaboration between states and education publishers to ensure that states will have access to current educational materials that meet the framework of the standards. The English Language Arts Executive Committee consisted of ten individuals from all over Kansas, including Leanne Roderick, who is from my school district, USD 457 in Garden City to my right. These individuals are educators, not federal employees, not publishing company staff members, but are education-based. Another common misperception is that the federal government will take over ownership of the standards initiative. In fact, the federal government won't be governing or overseeing the standards initiative. It's been state-led since its inception and will remain so. The National Governors Association and Council for State Chief School Officers are working to develop a long-term governance structure to include leadership from governors, chief state school officers, and state policymakers. Another common misperception is that the standards tell our teachers what to teach. The standards aren't a curriculum. They are a set of goals and expectations for what knowledge and skills our students need to have to succeed in the future. Whether that means attending college, or career training programs, or entering the workforce, the teachers and administrators at the district level decide how those standards are to be met. Teachers will still be creating lesson plans to help their students learn and will individualize instruction to the students in their classroom. As with any new way of doing things, there are misperceptions and misunderstandings, and we hope this has resolved some of the concerns you may have had about college and career-ready standards.
You double-clicked again this morning.
Bill Daggett, we want our schools to be better. We just don't want them to be different. And yet we know we can't expect improved outcomes without making some changes. The College and Career Ready Standards Initiative is the change. We need to improve the outcomes for our students and their future success. And this leads us into the roadmap of standards.
Thank you, Jean. The Education's Plan of Action, as you mentioned this and as Sally mentioned earlier in the presentation, began in 2010. There's been a lot of work that's been put into developing these standards since they were initiated. We want students to be college and career-ready. College is a means to an end and not the end. Career readiness means the student has the foundation for becoming a successful member of society. To maximize student success, we would like to equip them with the following skill sets: decision-making ability, innovation and creativity, goal-setting, results-driven actions, multitasking, and collaborating with others. We are currently not graduating students that are college or career-ready. Reading level requirements are higher for the military and entry-level occupations than they are for college literature courses. What this means is, current reality is, a high school graduate without any secondary education isn't equipped or eligible for a significant percentage of basic employment opportunities. This next slide appears quite busy, but just take it piece by piece with me as I explain what this slide is representing. This outlines the English Language Arts and Literacy Standards roadmap. There's also a roadmap for math. At the end of each of your aisles, you'll, you have the College and Career Readiness Standards for our district. As you see, there are four strands listed at the top: reading, writing, speaking and listening, and language. And again, I'm just focusing on the English Language Arts for this portion of the presentation. Under each strand, there are anchor standards that support the college and career readiness standards. For example, at the beginning of your book, under English Language Arts for kindergarten, you'll see the first strand, which is reading standards for literature. Underneath, you will see there's ten anchor standards to support this strand. We applied our own curriculum to each standard. Our district implemented the new standards in the fall of 2011 with kindergarten. First and second grade implemented the standards last year, and all grades have implemented the standards this year. And that is for both English Language Arts and mathematics, which are all included in your handout.
There are six key shifts that we have seen in the English Language Arts with the shift to Common Core. The first shift is, we've been focusing a lot on literary texts or fiction. Now we're looking at a fairly even split, 50/50, of informational text and literary texts, which leads us to increasing our opportunities to push our kids outside the envelope, getting them out of their comfort zone to dealing with more complex texts. Also, with their reading and writing connections, they're being required to substantiate what it is that they're thinking, not just, "I believe that he said the sky was blue," but showing in the texts what it is that can prove those connections. Also, gone are the days where we have to diagram a sentence saying adjective, adverb, verb, but rather, taking everything into context as a whole paragraph or a whole sentence, a whole story, not looking at things in isolation. But my favorite two shifts, I guess, are these last two, in dealing with student-centered conversations about text and academic vocabulary, which I really believe go hand in hand. I have a second grader who has gone through Common Core since kindergarten, and a third grader who just started Common Core this year. And you can definitely tell a difference between the language and the vocabulary that they use. With the academic vocabulary, they're being sentence stems at this point to get them to say, what, get them to the point where they need to be with what the teachers are looking for, such as "I predict that," and that type of language. I've seen my second grader using that language probably throughout this entire school year. My third grader, probably within the last two weeks, I would say, has actually gotten to that level as well, where he's able to delve more into the text and use more academic vocabulary with regard to talking about those things, which all leads to minimizing the gap that Tom talked about earlier between what's going on in the real world and what's going on in the academic world.
Two of the key shifts in mathematics are focus and coherence. The focus is on teaching fewer concepts but at deeper levels of understanding. And coherence is achieved by building a good educational base to build upon. K through five standards provide a solid foundation in the fundamentals of math. K through 12 standards identify key topics and continuous progress at each grade level. This develops confidence and mathematical thinkers to apply number sense when problem-solving. Additional key shifts in mathematics are balance of concepts and skills. Content standards require both conceptual understanding and procedural fluency, learning the critical information to succeed at the next level of coursework. Students are expected to have speed and accuracy for simple calculations and develop understanding to learn more than the trick to how to get to the answers, how to get to the correct answer. Clustered or integrated standards provide practice in applying mathematical ways of thinking to real-world issues and challenges. Concepts are interwoven rather than taught in isolation, which again, supports higher-order math reasoning.
Obviously, we're in favor of college and career-ready standards and believe that they're good for students. It's providing consistency across schools, states, and the nation. We are a truly mobile society now. I know in our community, we're looking at a lot of transient workers who come in and out for seasonal work. But it's not just our community. The whole nation is becoming mobile now. Not everyone stays in the same location that they were born in. Our board is a tremendous example of that. I'm from the eastern part of Kansas. We've got someone from central Kansas, someone from the state down south. And we're truly mobile. And being able to have that consistency is going to be a tremendous asset to students who are going to be using these standards wherever they are going to be. These clear standards also allow for more self-directed learning. In some of our schools, our teachers are giving, getting the parents more involved with their students' education by sending home some, basically, tests on reading and mathematics to get the students ready for dealing with some of these issues. They're, for example, my second grader, he's on grade level. He's giving, been given those tests for his grade level. My third grader's a little bit above grade level. So they're pushing him a little bit further by giving him a higher grade-level test. That's allowing for the teachers to have higher expectations of our students and to push them just a little bit further. And by giving fewer standards for teachers to work with, they're getting a deeper understanding of that which is being taught and becoming truly prepared for college or career. They're also good for teachers as well. In our school district, we utilize professional learning communities a great deal in our schools. And by using these PLCs or professional learning communities, the teachers are able to work together to figure out, okay, here's the woods. Where are we going to get the trees? Or going from the trees to the woods? And being able to truly understand what it is that they need to be teaching their students and bouncing ideas off of them, of each other. I've never heard of a teacher saying, "I need less time with this student." They need more time to be able to delve deeper and deeper into the curriculum and the items that they're trying to teach versus, "I have five minutes for this, I have 10 minutes for this, I have five minutes for this." And if they don't get it in those five minutes, they need those two more minutes, I'm sorry. By using these college and career-ready standards, we're able to delve deeper and get the students to completely understand or more fully understand what it is that they are being taught.
How will we address these shifts? By adding rigor, relevance, and relationships. We will provide scaffolds for grade-level text during whole-group reading. Students will be taught to annotate and write about what they have recently read, which develops a higher-order thinking process. It's our objective to provide real-world problem-solving. Metacognition is the awareness of one's own learning or thinking process. Metacognition is what a student uses when they don't know what to do. We need to challenge students to justify answers, take position on an issue, and develop justification. Students will debate, converse, and generally think at a deeper level. Career pathways and academies truly do support the shift towards college and career readiness standards, primarily through relevance and relationships. Assessments will also change. They will be more difficult. Performance assessments will be ready for the 2014-15 school year. The assessments will see if students know what to do when they don't know what to do. There will be a new emphasis on thinking and problem-solving. Next-generation assessments are looking for personal student growth and will measure progress towards college and career readiness.
I'd like to thank everyone for attending today. Please feel free to contact us at the convention here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments that you may have. Thank you.
Twenty-five minutes with the group. Add ten for Sally, you're at 35 minutes. Over. So you now have, you would have time for twenty, good twenty, twenty-five minutes of questions.
No, that's not bad at all, really, because...
That surprised me.
If there isn't many questions from the peanut gallery, which I'd be surprised. But if there isn't, but usually it's some, just on clarification of how you said or whether you said something. But Sally is a ready-made time pen pal. Not needless, but I'm inherently interested in information.
I would surprise me if she's closer to fifteen than ten.
Can you open to some suggestions?
Sure.
Okay. Tom, a suggestion I would have is that you would refer to the brochure. A brochure will be put in everybody's package, whether they come to this or not. There's like a USD 457 brochure that has all of your information regarding each and every board member. I recommend that you refer to, that they do have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of them. And also, I know that Gloria refers to it, but the actual curriculum refers to that, that it's at the end of the table. So set the stage that those, those additional information is available.
Do you want, or you want me to refer to that, or wait for Gloria to get there?
I think you, at the beginning, if you refer to all of the handouts that's available from the brochure that's in their package that, golly, they'll start giving to that package. I don't think I got one of those. Well, then they pull it out and put it up on top of their desk, and they can see about everybody. Refer to the, as I said, the PowerPoint presentation, that they're gonna have a copy of that in color, and then also the curriculum here. And then when Gloria refers to it, it's just a second time, a reminder. And then when Gloria refers to it, it's just a second time, a reminder for them. Suggestion I would have is too, that you refer to yourself as the president of the board, and refer to Gloria as vice president of the board, and everyone else as members of the Board of Education for USD 457.
Really put some structure to the board and content.
Even though that's in the brochure, by you introducing it, it kind of lets everybody know what your position is on the board, from president to vice president to member of the board. Personally, your audience is, is the board. Boards of education throughout the state of Kansas, as well as superintendents. That's probably the extent of your audience. There probably will be some KASB employees in that group as well. You know, when you refer to, and some of your presentations allow for this better than others, but if you can refer to your occupation, if you can refer to your family and how your family can benefit from the Common Core, in other words, you're going to make your presentation more relevant to your audience. Now, some of you have more technical information, but that's a little difficult to do. But the more you can do that, I think the more the presentation's going to pummelize to, to your audience. I thought it was good. I thought it was spiritual. There's a lot of good content here.
Do you, do you three feel silly not speaking? No?
We're here to support you. I think where we could help you is maybe if there are questions, we'll be able to field some of those questions. But this is your presentation. This is what's going to give it meaning to those boards of education. They're used to hearing superintendent types talk all the time.
I'm going to try to read less and work more, but for tonight, I just wanted to make sure about the right content.
The more eye contact, the more eye contact that you can have with them so that they feel like you're talking to them. Just suggestions I had, take them from what they're worth.
On your second and third grader example, your second grader that's had more Common Core speaks differently. I like that.
On, I think it's slide twenty-two of Jean's, where it says, "The standards recognize that both content and skills are important." That's one that we trimmed down. And on the second bullet, it says, "For example," and then there were subsequent bullets.
That's one of the things I had noted, is to take off the "for example" and to increase the font size on the remaining text. And I will give that to you, Dr. Penns, that we want. I did have a question, though, since I'm kind of just droning on and on through these. Is that going to work, or would somebody else want to kind of step in? Isn't too much of one voice, or? I thought it sounded good.
I thought it did too, because it's very factual. And, and there's no distractions to the facts, the way you're laying them out. Not that the other things are distracting, but it's a nice, even, very even, and of course, you've done an excellent job of laying out, you know, your message. It's a very even presentation on that. And, and because of not only the people you're presenting to, but the nature of the common misconception, I guess, is the source of a lot of your questions, too.
Do you feel like it's droning on?
Yeah, I'm happy to just talk.
Well, no, it's not that, but when you're saying, "This, this is the misconception, and now I'm the one providing the same answer."
Yeah, I'm going to actually reorder those, probably for the real one.
Do you want to read the misconceptions, and she can answer the facts? You're talking, you're pointing to me because he's not, are you going to be able to?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't mind. I just kind of wondered if it, it just sounded too...
I think it sounded better than I expected it to.
I think there's a consistency there. Maybe that's where Mark was going.
That's what I was saying.
That's good.
It's always funny when someone just raises a question.
I liked your reordering scenario that you presented.
Well, I have another one. I've gotten some more input, so I'll give that to Dr. Penns. I did have a comment, though, and I don't know if we could tie this in to either the beginning or maybe the end, but we're presenting this on December seventh. And December seventh is Pearl Harbor Day, seventy-two years ago from the day we present. America really received a wake-up call that, that, you know, we were then in the war, you know? And, and Common Core, in, in many ways, is an educational wake-up call that we have got to change what we are doing for our, our students, or we are going to, to just not be successful in the future. So I, I didn't know if that somehow could tie in, but I think that in some ways, they're both kind of, you know, we're getting hit with, with some circumstances that we can correct with Common Core, just, just like the original Pearl Harbor Day, seventy-two years ago, was a shock.
I can take that tie or, I don't know what the right word is, but I can use, I can use that as part of the closing.
Yeah, it almost goes with that Aaron Hoefler quote, you know, that the learners are going to succeed and the learned are just not.
You're going to actually read that, right, Laura? Will you read that out loud?
Well, if we have that clause in, I don't think we need to. We can just leave that up there, and then Tom do the Pearl Harbor section.
Do you, do you really think that is wise?
Yeah, I, I, you have to look at a veteran's side of Pearl Harbor and people dying, and you're saying...
No, it's, but it's a...
I understand what you...
It's appropriate concept, but I'm not sure that it will be perceived in a way that you intended.
So, well, that's, that's, you know, what I'm bringing it up is, is there a way that we could integrate something to connect that?
There are ways to do it subtly. I mean, let's just say, you know, you start this, however you want to do it. You can always call that fact to folks' attention without saying, "And this is Common Core."
But, but you know, on Pearl Harbor, you know, the original one, America was sleeping, you know? And, and then that happened. And, and we're somewhat educationally sleeping now, and that is why.
No, I, I think actually that the parallel is intriguing, but I'm just not sure that that's a message.
Well, I can't figure out exactly how to do it the right way.
Yeah, you got to be very, very careful.
But anyway, something to think about.
Say that. I think it's cool, when you're doing it.
There are some parallels in the general sense.
If I was to say something along the lines of just, just sitting there all covered my head, it was closing with this, I wasn't planning on reading that or saying, or, you know, that was just as a backdrop. Seventy-two years ago today, our world changed significantly. This is an opportunity for us to be proactive in our changes, educationally.
You didn't have to specifically say Pearl Harbor, like nobody's going to get it.
And that's why we need Common Core, because people don't even know.
Well, I would have been saying, rather than reactive, because that's where we were seventy-two years ago. We were reacting. We weren't proactive at all.
I, I just don't know that Common Core happened all of a sudden on this day. And, and, I mean, it hasn't. Everybody's implemented it. This is information about that.
You mean to grab it, Common Core, and to grab it, Pearl Harbor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Pearl Harbor didn't happen in one day either. I mean, it was a plan that took a great deal of forethought and planning out. I mean...
I think I would just...
Let's avoid it just to, because of potential negative consequences.
Unless you can order it just right and make it right, it would work, but it didn't have to be worse than right.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up. I know it's nine, well, none of us are really asking very clearly, but it just...
One, you can let Sally words speak.
I think the way Tom said it was good.
Except we didn't say Pearl Harbor, and I think it worked.
Yeah, that part, that...
Yeah, what you said was great.
There's on top of it.
Write it down, think it out. I mean, run it by everyone. I think you can make it work, but the words have got to be just right.
And there's words.
Get up every morning to rest, or make it...
You know, one of the, Tom, one of the suggestions I had, because I've been seeing the seating chart here and introductions, and maybe you thought about this, but your introductions, then and away from like left to right, or right to left, or whatever, might be a little easier than hitting board members first.
Oh, good idea.
Well, the seating chart was based on the thought that we'd be sitting in chairs. Where we're now going to be sitting behind tables with, and what I was thinking is that we were going to have to pass one of these lapel mics down the line and try to simplify that. Where we're sitting at tables with table mics, my, my suggestion would be to rearrange the seating and have speakers closer to the screen versus the way it is now.
It's just one of those things of sitting down here and you're introducing and you say names. They're going to have the brochure, and I think it's a great suggestion to call attention right away to those resource materials. You run the risk of them publicing for that, whether they're listening to you. And then your introductions go from right to left or left to right, and that'll be easier for them. Would be my suggestion. And I like the one where you put Sally, because I like the fact that she's over here and she's over there, just from the standpoint of speaking and kicking this thing off, knowing how she, you know, she's a dynamic speaker and, and you've got a commanding voice. You introduce, and then she takes off. I think that all works great, too. That's two...
So you're thinking keep a spread versus concentrating speakers in the middle?
I kind of thought so, but, or either that, or you two guys get right in here, but, but the right-left thing.
Yeah, that was, I mean, I want, for example, Alex and I at opposite tables, Gloria and Laura at opposite tables.
But as you introduce, just for their mindset, I would sweep it. Just a suggestion.
I think you need to introduce Sally first.